Call the regular meeting, September 17th, 2024. Order, please stand to play the lead.
The citizens of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Are we recorded?
Yes. Roll call.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Horvath.
Here.
Mrs. Sensi.
Here.
And Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 20th, 2024?
I'll move.
Start you.
Any discussion? I just want to point out that the agenda that I'm looking at doesn't have the date, but the date is, it has August, and that's all it says. So it's August 20th, 2024. Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Obstand.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any board members wishing to give a report this evening?
Moment of silence. It is always sad to learn of someone's passing, especially when it is a member of our Madison family. Recently, we learned of the passing of Faye Bradley, a retired Madison teacher and administrator. She was born March 31st, 1947, in Charden, the daughter of Walter Morrison and Vera Webb. She grew up in Mesopotamia, Ohio. They studied at Kent State University and Case Western Reserve University, as well as a whole bunch of other different universities for various coursework. She began her career in 1967 as a substitute teacher in Turnbull County, and taught elementary school in the Cleveland area prior to coming to Madison in 1978, where she started as a tutor, making $5.25 an hour. She taught at North Madison Elementary from 1979 to 1997. In August 1977, she became a county employee that was assigned in Madison through October 2005 as an administrator. During her time in Madison, she coordinated federal programs and worked to secure grants for the district in addition to serving as curriculum director. She went back to work part-time for Painesville City and then went to Lakeland, where she worked in the early childhood program. Faye was very close to her North Madison colleagues, and they were known to have some fun at school. Faye was adventurous and loved to travel with her family and friends. Her laugh and sense of humor was infectious. Even when she had both arms in a cast from an accident, she found humor in the situation. Faye truly loved life and all the challenges and good times it brought. In talking with Stan Heffner last week, the first hint thing he said was, "Faye was one of the good ones. She worked hard and wanted what was best for the students of the district." Former students remember her fondly on that she was a caring teacher. Friends remember her as a loyal friend who would do anything for them. Faye truly was one of those people who made a difference in the world, and she will be missed. Most importantly, Faye will be missed by her husband Doug, her children Richard and Megan, as well as her grandson and other extended family. All of us at Madison schools extend our deepest and most sincere sympathy to Faye's family and parents. So, digging through her file, I just, this is so characteristic of Faye, and, you know, there's a few of us here at the table that knew her. But she wrote for a lateral, or a coursework completion to her superintendent, Dr. Rick and Love. "I would like to apply for a lateral move on the pay scale. I've completed the requirements for the MA plus 15 column. The necessary transcripts are on file." And she put it on, cut out of a salvo. Such an elementary teacher thing to do, right? But it just brought a smile to my face. And plus, that perfect elementary school persona, you know? But, you know, I worked with Faye, and Natalie worked with Faye, pretty.
She was my daughter's favorite teacher, very favorite, favorite teacher. She, my daughter's going to be 38, and she called, like, tearful about it when she heard, so, lasting memories.
Yep.
I worked with her in Painesville.
That's right, she did.
Very nice lady.
She was always joyful.
She was.
Yeah, always. Singing with the kids and stuff, it was.
Big smile on her face, you know, in any situation. In any situation.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give a report? We don't have anyone registered for public participation, so we'll report, we'll move on to reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. First, we have our yearly resolution pertaining to the renewal of the LED lighting project that I had emailed to all of you. So I'd like to recommend the approval of the resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of bond anticipation notes for the purpose of refunding a prior series of bond anticipation notes, the proceeds of which were originally used to acquire energy efficiency improvements for the school district.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I would like to recommend the approval of the August 2024 financial statements.
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I would like to ask for the approval of the permanent appropriations and the certificate of estimated resources. I had emailed all of the notes prior to this meeting, but some of the changes I just wanted to highlight is all the funds that we were receiving from the ARPS or grants that are due to expire at the end of the month have been moved back into general fund. So that, that was accounted for in the permanent appropriations. It also followed my May 2024 five-year forecast. So both negotiated agreement raises are taken into account for, the health insurance change and rates were taken into account for. And so the appropriations came in a little bit over $39 million.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I would like to recommend the approval of the following donations. A generous donation of school supplies, shoes and clothing from Hope Ridge United Methodist Church to North Elementary School to be used as needed. A generous donation of school supplies from American Legion Post 112 to North Elementary School to be used as needed. A generous donation of school supplies from American Legion Post 112 Women's Auxiliary to South Elementary School to be used as needed. A generous donation of dilly bars from Madison Dairy Queen to North Elementary School to be used for PBIS rewards. A generous donation of gift card, gift certificates from Duffy's Tavern to South Elementary to be used for staff streak of the week awards. A generous donation of dilly bars from Madison Dairy Queen to South Elementary to be used for student streak of the week awards. And finally, a generous donation of school supplies from PT Electronics to Madison Local Schools to be used as needed.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Thank you to all of the folks who donated. We appreciate it. Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my treasurer's report.
Thank you. Reports to the administrative team?
Yes, I have several items this evening. First, I want to start with Jeff and I were at Madison Middle School this afternoon, where Partners in Science and Arcadia Greenhouse presented an award to three of our teachers, Liz Naniger, Chrissy Vilcek, and Melissa Kalaric, a greenhouse to be put on the site. They have been, Arcadia is a Madison company, and in the last couple years, they have been looking to expand their presence in organic gardening for students. Last year, Perry won the greenhouse. They were first up. They've had a few growing pains. They've learned, and, you know, Pat Smith is all about this, so his goal is to have the greenhouse up before winter, so that when it comes time to put the seeds in in the spring, they're, they're ready to go. But it's really very exciting. And as I shared at the event, when we built the middle school, one of the things that we had to talk about to be LEED certified was how we would use the property around it, not just the building, but how we would use the property for curriculum and instruction. And we did talk about, back in 2012, the potential for gardens. And it just takes those teachers with the passion to do it, right? And we found some very passionate teachers that want to provide that experience for our students. And this year has been a good growing year. They've, they started eggplants and seeds in the eighth grade classroom last spring. They actually have had an abundant crop of eggplant this year. It's a vegetable, you know, but not, it's an acquired taste, but. How large is the greenhouse?
I don't know.
Do we know where it's going to go?
Yes. It's going over where they have the garden. They're going to move the football shed, that I do know. So it's, it's a good size. I don't think it's huge, but I will get that information.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'll see it when it goes out.
No, actually, they want to have an article and a press release, so I.
Okay, great.
I'm going to do that for the newsletter that's coming out on Friday. But yeah, it's pretty exciting. And I bet Pat will know right away. The other thing that I got to participate in today, which was nice, is I went across the street for their Constitution Day program, and I know South did one as well. Second graders do that program in the district. And they had to learn very quickly four songs to perform, and it was very exciting. And the kids did a great job, and it was, you know, they came in their red, white, and blue, and, you know, they were excited to perform for their parents, and they also performed for the fourth grade. So, very cool experience. Now, I'm going to turn it over to our MEA Staff Member of Month presentation, Margie Edwards, is here to present to Mrs. Natalie Meschkin-Push. And I just, I will tell you a couple of things that I know about Natalie. I've known Natalie since I've worked in the district. She is in year 24 at MHS as a math teacher, and she is a part of our freshman academy this year. So she was a big part of our Each Child on Track grant last year. She worked with kids that were behind in coursework and helped them get across the stage, which our percentage went up to, at the conclusion of last year, to over 91%. So that's a big jump. And in no small effort, thanks to Natalie. She was a National Board Certified teacher, and she does work hard each and every day for her students. So without further ado, I'm going to present, ask Mrs. Edwards to come up and present to Mrs. Mesh.
It's wearing your torso. I have the camera. Okay. Hi, I'm Margie Edwards. I'm the vice president of the MEA, and I'd like to thank Angela and the board for giving us time to go ahead and present this award at the meeting. As you learned in the August meeting, Gretchen Baptie wrote a grant and received that grant, a substantial grant. And one of the things that allows us to do is to recognize an MEA member each month for the awesome things that they've been doing. And so I wanted to say a little bit about some of the things that Natalie's colleagues, colleagues, excuse me, said about her, and hence being our first recipient. So some of the things they said were, "She's fair. She goes the extra mile. She makes MHS a better place." I think I'd even put in Madison School District a better place. Some of the things that were mentioned was how she organizes all the common areas, our cyber cafe, closets that people have not been in, in years. And she goes in there and she does the organization. She runs the math lab, which has not only been a math lab and a wonderful place for kids to get extra help in math, but they come in for every subject. And she does her best to help every subject and, and help those kids get through. Obviously, we mentioned the freshman academy, which she volunteered to be part of this year. And she is so involved in extracurricular activities and helps with a lot of the, it shows up to the, to the different awards programs and things like that that are wonderful, and supports all the students, but in turn is also supporting teachers because she wants to see everyone succeed, not just the students. She wants the staff to succeed as well. And I have been, she has been a leader, a mentor, overall valuable asset to our community. And I have been very lucky to work down the hall from her for the past 16 years. And so I am very honored to give the first MEA Member of the Month award to Natalie Meschkin-Push. And we have a certificate. And an award. Want to come up and grab it? I'll move over a little.
Thank you so much. What an honor. I was completely shocked. I didn't expect it at all. So when you said so many, yeah, it was just an honor to receive it, so thank you. I feel like over the course of my, it's actually my 31st year of teaching this year, so over the course of all those years, I feel from my first year till now, how much I've changed from those first couple of years, and all the things that have happened, especially over the course of the years of COVID teaching, and how we've had to change as staff members to really accommodate all the needs of kids and just be understanding and do the best we can every day. So, thank you. It's truly an honor. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks.
Congratulations, Natalie.
Thank you.
And I'm just real quick, very curious, what kind of artifacts have you found in those closets?
So many things that I could find in some of those closets over the years. Just something that I chose to kind of do, and some old technology that we found places for and homes for, and old textbooks, clean up the book room, and some other things to find, you know, yeah.
Did you find enough, do you think?
Did you find a DITO machine?
We did not find a DITO machine, no. I bet, we did not find that, just.
Overhead projector.
Some technology, old overhead projectors, and just trying to make the space at MHS a little bit more friendly for everyone, so.
Where did you teach before coming to Madison?
Let's see, my first year of, of teaching was at Ledgemont Schools. So I taught there for one year, and then I taught for three years at Pinatuning Valley High School, and a year at Riverside Schools in Angel Township. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I've got two more items to talk about this evening. I did want to talk a little bit about safety, as it was, you know, a big piece of our week last week. It's a big piece every day, but it was, you know, brought to the forefront by a variety of things. And I just want to reiterate to the entire school community how important safety is and working with our SROs to ensure that our students are safe at school. We have phenomenal SROs in our four buildings, and Teresa helps to serve us over here at the pre-K as well. And we are working with our safety consultant, Tim Dobakio. He's going to come out in the next couple weeks to do another walkthrough with us. He did one about five, six years ago. And we have to re-up our safety plans at the end of this year, so it's a good time to do it, to see where we're at, to see if there's things we need to change, and go from there. And I am very thankful for our partnerships with our local law enforcement, both the township and the village police departments. Both chiefs are really accessible. They're willing to work through whatever issue to ensure that we can open our schools safely each and every day. And, you know, not every district has those relationships, so I am very grateful to, you know, our chiefs and our SROs and all our staff who work hard to keep things, you know, safe each and every day. You know, I, shutting the doors, reminding people that our staff is about keeping kids safe and keeping themselves safe. I do want to give a quick update on the state report card that was released last week. I talked about where I thought we were going to land a meeting or two ago. And so I just wanted to share that, you know, we, we stayed in the three stars. We went down half a star. And where that was a big change from last year was in our progress component. I think we went three stars as a district last year. This year, we are two stars, and we're looking into that data. That data was just released last week. It's the last thing to get put in the report card. But I do want to share, you know, each of our buildings. Our high school is at three stars. They did well in achievement, and they've got to work, do a little bit with their gap closing. But our pride, pride and joy right now are our elementary schools. We have a four and a half star at North and a four and a half star at South, where they're, they're really getting some things done. And I think that's all the work we're doing in literacy, and next up is going to be math. Our middle school, they're at three stars. They're still, you know, gap closing is at three, and achievement is at three. Those are the tests, and then it's that progress component there, which is the value added, how much students are growing and where they're growing. And, and so we're going to dive into that data a little bit more, but like I said, that was released just at the end of last week. It's the last thing to go into the report card, because they have to take all the tests, and then they send it off to the vendor to determine those, where that value added measure comes from. And if you have no questions on that, I am going to turn it over to Dave, who's going to talk a little bit about what he did this morning with our, our partners from the ESC.
Before I hit that, you know, a couple weeks ago, we had to rapidly dismiss our middle school and high schools because of a water main break that occurred from some construction that was happening outside of our district. But I just wanted to shout out to, to our staff for their quick response for, you know, many hands make light work concept. Our bus drivers hustled in, they were, they were not in, and they were called and said, "Get here as quickly as you can," and our buses were lining up as quickly as we could. It was time sensitive, because our elementary schools, we wanted to get our middle school and high schoolers home, and the buses back in time to do our, our elementary runs, and so many people, everybody, you know, everybody wanted to help in some way. We had afterwards people coming up saying, "In that situation, what else could I do?" So it's just, it's a nice testament to our staff how when there is a situation like that, everybody jumps in and wants, wants to help. So thank you to everybody in our, in our buildings and outside of our buildings for the help of that.
That seems so long ago because of all the others.
I know. Sorry, I'm a school.
There was, no, never got a call back. And I heard the great, that doesn't, that's pretty difficult. But I will try again.
So this morning, I did attend our, our Business Advisory Committee through the ESC of the Western Reserve with our friends who are here this evening. And that, that group meets regularly throughout the year. It's, it's schools and businesses come together to collaborate on how to prepare our students for the workplace and, and, you know, beyond our, our years here at school. This was the first meeting of the year. It was a combined meeting with both Lake and Georgia Counties. Sometimes we're all together, and sometimes we're, we're separate by county, but this was a, a full group. One thing that I noted that I thought was pretty cool this morning was, we had a couple of active duty military people invited to be on the committee. So we had a gentleman from the US Army and a gentleman who's going to join us from the US Air Force to bring that perspective to our advisory council and talk about, you know, some of the things that we can do in schools and to support people who may want to go down that, the path of joining our military. So that was pretty cool. Probably, well, the, the bulk of the meeting was a presentation by Joe Glaven, who is a workforce development person for the Manners Schools. And he talked about various partnerships he has with businesses and other school districts to provide early experiences for kids to explore pathways to the workforce. And I, I think that's the big idea of what I heard today is that, you know, people, how often people leave school unsure of what you want to do. And, you know, one of our biggest industries in our area is, is medical. But if you ask, you know, middle school kids, a lot of high school kids, what jobs are there in the medical field? Well, you've got nurses, and you've got doctors, and probably some other things. You know, but I think the idea is to provide experiences to, to people early to, to get to try out different things and see if they can find areas that they might be passionate about, things that they might want to do as they, you know, as they move on past school. Couple interesting statistics he threw out, you know, the biggest untapped resource are 18 to 24-year-olds. You know, kids leave high school, they think they've got a plan, and then that may fall through, and then what? He said 69% of the people who start off for a two-year degree don't finish. So then they're looking for work. And, well, now what should I do? And so the idea is try to, to get a variety of experiences available for students at an earlier age to, to give them the opportunity to have ideas as they come out. earlier age to give them the opportunity to have ideas as they come out. One of the interesting things too he talked about was, people often think, well, you're going to take the college path, or you're going to take the career path, or the military path. It doesn't have to be an either or, it's both. And if you think about it, people need continuing education in just about, you know, anything that they do. So they've got a lot of kids in their programs now that are doing both CCP and career tech education at the same time, and they're finding that the kids who are doing both are being successful in both. They're being successful in earning industry credentials as well as passing their college credit plus coursework. So that's, that's kind of a cool thing, and they're really preparing them to kind of be on a fast track no matter what industry they, they move into. Some ideas I take away, you know, I think with our Department of Education changing its name to the Department of Education and Workforce, there probably will be grant funds made available to try to improve those parts of our educational experience, so I'd like to keep my eye out and try to procure some money so we can expand the opportunities we provide for kids to get those early experiences. And I know that the ESC mentioned this morning that they are going to be having just school district collaborative meetings where schools can come together, talk about workforce development and ideas that are happening in other places and we can learn from each other, so. It's something that I'd like to see us expand and continue to grow. If there's anything you guys want to add, you were there.
You did a great job, Dave. I think, you know, what we're trying to do is, and the first of the kickoff for the year, is really, you know, highlights, we also have representatives from the State Department and how needs jobs, which is really, you know, and I think you highlighted too about having the military involved. It was interesting, their statistic too this morning, about 2% of the overall population go into the military, but when you look at the overall number of what that number is, sounds low, but they really highlighted, you know, what we need, you know, in all workforce, no matter if students go to college, whether they go to workforce, whether we educate them and have them at career centers to be able to go into industry, but really, I think it's providing all actions and opportunities earlier on for students. You know, for they, the exposure is key, it's key for them to make choices and know what they want to do earlier on.
No one has any questions? And that's, that's a meeting that occurs approximately monthly?
So in statute, the ESCs in Ohio operate countywide business advisory councils. Many of our districts have them independent, they were in law, then they came back about a decade ago, so we, you know, I think I initiated first in Geogga, Countywide, VAC, and then Lake, which helps with the districts to support with the reporting, the state requirements, but it also allows for our districts to have an inclusive component of all businesses in the community. Some that border, you know, Madison, but that come in, like Lubeursaw, larger entities, but it is a requirement that all school districts either operate in a kind of business advisory or they're a part of one. So we kind of took it upon ourselves just to help with the state requirements, the reporting, as well as, I think Angela will have on the board, the business advisory plan that's required by the end of September.
Well, there's the manufacturing that's going to be coming up at Manner, that's the...
AWT. Yeah, AWT.
The company I work for, we go to that all the time.
And Madison actually hosted.
Yeah.
I was here for that, probably Angela was probably before I told that, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah, wasn't it?
I have a question, actually, so from this meeting, are there any potential ideas of how you're going to bring what you talk about from the meeting into Madison? And that maybe doesn't involve manufacturing, because I know that we've, we've been, you know, kind of presenting a little bit of that here and there for a while now, but what about the other industries?
Sure, and that's also in our new strategic plan, which is, you know, to explore opportunities and ways to expand that as well. So, you know, they shared resources today, they shared some of the academies that they're running for credit through, through their school district and a couple of the other school districts that work with them, so taking a look at what we currently offer, comparing it to what else is out there, other opportunities, specifically, I couldn't tell you which one we're going to kind of land on, but, but it was really a good first step in kind of a, you know, in a 30-minute, 40-minute presentation to get some ideas of some things that, that you can see that other people are doing that we haven't explored yet.
Have we ever done, years ago, we used to do junior achievement here, and I always was really big on that, have we ever gotten back into that, thought about it?
I did make a contact last year, and I don't know if the middle school did not follow up, or I'll follow back on it, but they were supposed to connect so that they could do the economic presentations, yes. So I will follow back up on that. All right, are we ready for the presentation? All right, under the employment contracts this evening, we're asking you to accept the resignation of Cheyenne Christian as Madison High School Assistant Cheerleading Advisor winner. We're asking you to accept the resignation of Chris Elliott, Madison High School Head Swimming Coach. We're asking you to enter into the following employment contract, to employ Madison Keel as an Educational Assistant Playground at South Elementary effective September 11, 2024, to employ Christine Crew as a three-hour Nutrition Services cashier position at Madison Middle School, to employ Holly Yeo as a Building Substitute Teacher at South Elementary School effective September 16, 2024. We're asking you to employ each of the following substitute teachers as nominated by the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve and/or the Madison Local School District's Assistant Superintendent under a one-year limited substitute teacher contract, beginning with Rayanne Atkins and ending with Tyler Lynn. We're asking you to employ the following persons as casual day-to-day substitutes, Deborah Bracker and Hattel Patel. We're asking you to employ the following certificated personnel, each under a one-year limited supplemental contract for the 2024-25 school year, beginning with Chad Bergard and ending with Andrew Chamaso. We're asking you to employ the following non-certificated persons under a one-year limited personal service contract for the 2024-25 school year, beginning with Steve Couch and ending with Nick Guston. We're asking you to approve a change in placement on the teacher's salary schedule for Jenna Ella, moving from MA 15 to MA 30.
Second, any discussion?
I don't know, I tell you that Jenna Ella emailed us for salary notice and did not put it on a nice list, because we're technology.
Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next motion is to approve the frequently asked questions for the Lake County Schools Financing District Lobby on the upcoming November 5 ballot.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is a best practice from the guidance that we got from the Auditor of State last year, and Riverside did it for their, their financing district questions, as you recall, the financing district is four districts, with the ESC as the coordinating district with Tanesville, Riverside, Perry, and that's, and it's on the ballot on November 5, and it's not tax increase.
So frequently asked questions are just that, they're not vote for or against an issue, they're simply facts that the voters can consider when they decide what they, how they want to vote?
Correct.
Roll call.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we have a memorandum of understanding to reduce the monthly premium for the Plan One Family Plan from 280, 37 down to 280, 36 for the 24, 25 school year.
Second, any discussion?
Yes, we did this because it's easier to divide over our pay system in a two-phase, so.
It's a treasure thing.
By the time we got there, I was like.
And he makes a difference.
Do we have to Andy him, or? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
I don't know, that's a lot of a deep question. Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have a lengthy set calendar this evening. First item is to enter into an agreement with the Madison Village Police Department, Madison Local School District, to provide a school resource officer to South Elementary. We're asking you to enter into an agreement with Auburn Career Center and Madison Local School District to provide field-based observation experiences for students enrolled in the educator career pathways earlier for the 24-25 school year. We're asking you to give approval to a trip to Scotland and Ireland scheduled for June 18 through the 27 for, I'm verifying it's middle school students, it could possibly be high school students as well, for, through their using EF tours. And to approve a resolution declaring transportation impractical for the 24-25 school year as found on file in the Board Office, to enter into a payment agreement between Madison Local School District and Crossroads Health as found on file in the Board Office, to approve the following as a girls' basketball volunteer, Karen Alley, to enter into a contract with Community Bus Service to provide transportation services for a two-year period beginning July 1, 2024, to approve an addendum to the agreement with the Educational Service Center of Western Reserve to participate in the sale program for the 24-25 school year, to provide, approve an addendum to the agreement with the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve to provide nursing services for the Madison Local Schools for the 24-25 school year, and to approve an addendum to the agreement with the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve to provide 145 days of behavior services for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we do have a need for executive session tonight, we have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the appointment or employment of public employees or regulated individuals.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
We will not be taking any action when we come back from executive session other than to close the meeting, understanding this.